Council persons, basically, if you're a public official, it applies to you. So the first area is the Ohio Ethics Law. The second area would be the Ohio Sunshine Law and the Ohio Open Meeting Act. And then the last topic will be the Ohio Public Records Act. And then, as Jack said, or excuse me, as Seth said, if you have any questions, what I would suggest is at the end of each topic, I'll just ask if anybody has any questions, and we'll just sort of go from there. If I'm unable to answer your question, I'll make sure I look into it and get a response back through either Seth or Jack. For example, with the Ohio Ethics Law, as you can probably imagine, there are a lot of different topics. If you were to go on the Ohio Ethics Commission website, I think they have about 40 years or so of advisory opinions that they've issued. So there's a lot of various topics that are covered in that section. But my purpose tonight is sort of highlight and overview just the ones that you're probably most likely to run into as a Board or Commission member. So with that, I'll start with the Ohio Ethics Law. And that is found, if you're interested, it's an Ohio Revised Code 102.01 is where the section begins. And basically, to just give sort of a general, basic summary of what that law says is that it generally prohibits public officials from using their official positions as a public official for their own personal benefit or for the benefit of their family members or for the benefit of their business associates. As I said a minute ago, because you are a Board or Commission member with a city, which is a political subdivision, that is why this law applies to you. The term that the Ohio Criminal Code uses is "public servant", which also applies, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Because basically, some of the violations of the Ohio Ethics Law are also criminal violations, which is why we felt it was important to sort of give a refresher and an update. So everybody sort of has this information in their mind, not to scare anybody or anything, but just so that you're aware of it. So as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the Ohio Ethics Commission is the body that was created to administer, interpret, and assist in enforcement of the Ohio Ethics Laws. They do have a website, and if you just Google "Ohio Ethics Commission", there is a whole slew of information on their website. Like I said, they have advisory opinions, they have videos. We're going to show one of those here in a little bit that we were able to get off the Ohio Ethics Commission website that I think is pretty helpful, and it's not extremely long. Just to cover a few of the topics that you'll see in this video in a little more detail, I have about three areas of the Ohio Ethics Law that I think are probably some of the more important to cover tonight. And those are the conflict of interest. Those are the ones that tend to come up probably on the more regular basis than some of the others. This is not an all-inclusive list, but like I said, I think it's probably the most common. And one of the most common conflict of interest areas is when a Board or Commission member or a Council member is confronted with taking action or making decisions in matters that affect yourself, your family, or your business associates. So as you'll hear in this video, what the Ohio Ethics Commission will tell you is that having a conflict is not illegal. The issue is how you respond to that conflict. So if you realize you do have a conflict, which basically is going to impair your ability to be objective because your personal interest or your interest of a family member, brother, sister, whatnot, or of a business associate is impacted, then at that point in time, you need to, in order to avoid the conflict, you need to recuse yourself from the matter or the case that's in front of your Board or Commission and abstain from acting on it. And so in order to clarify that a little more, because I know there are some questions as to, okay, if I have a conflict, do I, what does it mean to abstain and recuse myself? What exactly does that entail? And essentially, that entails recusing yourself from the entire case. So if there is a case that's before you that you have a conflict of interest on, that means you are not permitted to vote on that case. You're not permitted to discuss it or deliberate it. You're not permitted to review it, to make recommendations, to inspect or do any kind of investigation. Basically, you just need to completely step aside from that case and not have any involvement with it whatsoever. And one example I like to give people of this is I myself sat on a BZA board where I live a few years ago. And so the example I give is I had a conflict where, or I felt it was a conflict where, since I'm an attorney, as an attorney, I had done business with a court reporting agency that, in the past. And there was also another attorney sitting on this BZA board, and he had also done business with this court reporting agency in the past as part of practicing law. So when that case came up before us, the court reporting agency had filed some type of zoning request. I don't remember exactly what it was. So when that case came up, he and I both recused ourselves because we had done business with that particular business previously. So we felt it was best if we recused ourself. We did not deliberate, we did not vote. We sat in the audience, and when that case was done and over with, then we resumed our position back at the dais and held the, and listened to the other cases. Just a few other examples that I pulled from the Ohio Commission website is they have an advisory opinion whereby they were asked about a conflict for a city council member and whether or not it was a conflict for that council member to also sit on the Board of Trustees of a nonprofit corporation that contracts with the city. And they found that that would be a conflict because it was a dual interest for the council member to also sit on the Board of Trustees of that nonprofit corporation because it created a dual interest in a situation where there was a risk that the private considerations of that council member may detract from serving the public interest. A lot of times, you have a case involving a property matter. Those obviously are going to come up a lot on the BZA and on the Planning Commission. And there's a specific section of the ORC in the Ethics Law which prohibits a public official from participating in a land use, zoning, or other property matter before the public agency that affect land adjacent to or near the official's property if the matter will result in a definite and direct benefit or detriment to the value of the property. So one of the best examples I can give of that is, let's say there's a, and this comes from the High Commission too, if there's a neighbor of a Planning Commission member who's requested a zoning variance, that if it were granted, it would increase or decrease the value of the Planning Commission member's property, the Planning Commission member should recuse himself or herself from that matter and abstain from discussion and voting on that matter. So that's one that I think probably comes up on a pretty regular basis. Now, those are some prohibitions. What's not prohibited, though? An official is not prohibited from appearing before a public body that he or she serves as a citizen in the same manner which is available to other citizens and testifying about personal views on a matter affecting that official's property. So if we were to change the scenario a little bit, and let's say that, you know, this case was going to have some impact on your property. There was some sort of zoning request or variance that was before you, and it could have either a positive impact on the value of your property or a negative impact on the value of your property, then I think at that point, you would have to recuse yourself and abstain from that case. However, what the law says is that you could still, as a citizen, voice your personal views on that the same way that other citizens would. So in the case of Clayton, for your public hearings, you do have citizens who are allowed to express their views on various cases. So you are allowed to do that, although you would have to recuse yourself from the case. But you would not be able to testify as a representative of others. So you would be able to express your own personal opinion on that during the public comment portion, but you just could not represent other people with respect to that case. Also not prohibited is participating or voting on general legislation. For example, adopting or amending a zoning code if that provides a uniform benefit to all or most of the property. So if you're just voting on a zoning code, a general law, that really doesn't impact you specifically one way or the other, then most likely, that's going to be okay. And as you're going to hear in the video in a minute, what the Ethics Law will say is whether or not you personally feel you can be objective is not relevant. If the conflict exists, then you have to recuse and abstain. The second group of conflict of interest, probably not as prevalent as the first one, is accepting things of value. So basically, you cannot solicit or accept, quote, "anything of value", is what the Ohio Ethics Law says, which could have a substantial and improper influence on your performance of your duties. So basically, you cannot ask for something of value, and you cannot accept anything of value that's offered to you if it's going to have a substantial and improper influence on performing your duties. And they use a very broad definition of anything of value, which includes money, goods, checks, real estate interests, promise of future employment, and every other thing of value. So it's very, very broad, the way they're defining that. So such gifts would be an improper influence if they were provided by anyone to you who is doing or seeking to do business with the public agency, regulated by your public agency, or interested in matters before your public agency. So basically, if you had a company that was, that had a zoning request before the BZA of variance, and one of the primaries in the company offered you a trip to Vegas, it would be improper to accept that trip because obviously, a trip to Vegas is going to have a substantial effect or could have a substantial effect on how you vote on that case. So examples, you know, so it can be a little nebulous because you're like, well, okay, what's substantial and improper? What's anything of value? Some examples that the Ethics Commission gives of nominal gifts that you could accept would be things like a T-shirt or a mouse pad or a coffee mug. At the end of the day, you're probably best just not to take any of it because I don't think a coffee mug is going to affect your life one way or the other. And it also doesn't give any appearance of impropriety, even if nothing's going on. Sometimes somebody might see something that they think is improper, and that's almost as bad sometimes as if it is improper, is the image it leaves in the citizens' minds. The last conflict of interest topic I want to go over, and this is probably the least that might affect you, would be with respect to public contracts. And that is generally, you're prohibited from using your position as a Board or Commission member to secure a public contract for yourself, your family members, or your business associates. So that means you cannot authorize a public contract in which you, your family member, or a business associate has an interest. You cannot authorize an investment of public funds in those types of contracts. You cannot profit from those types of contracts. So generally, that's probably not going to come up too much in what's coming before you. But in the event there is something that comes along, that would be a violation. To summarize the violations aspect of this, like I said, the violations of the Ethics Law can attach, depending on which one it is, some civil and also some criminal penalties. Violations can resort, result in a felony, which is a fourth-degree felony, which is a max fine of $5,000 and 18 months in prison or both. Now, that's going to be on the extreme end, of course. Most provisions for violations of the Ethic Law are first-degree misdemeanors, which is a max fine of $1,000 and max jail of six months or both. So there are some criminal and some civil penalties that can attach. And again, I don't say that to scare anybody, but to make sure you're aware that that does exist in the law, obviously, as a deterrent to do any of these things. So just to summarize this particular topic, some quick do's and don'ts. Do avoid action which could give rise to an appearance of impropriety. Do recuse and abstain from cases which could directly impact you, a family member, or a business associate. Do recuse and abstain from all formal and informal action if you have a relationship with a private company or an organization that has a case before your Board or Commission. Do not ask for or accept anything of value from anybody who has business before your Board or Commission. Do not use your Board or Commission appointment to obtain a financial gain or benefit for yourself, family members, or business associates. Don't sell goods or services to your Board or Commission. And that's the quick summary of the do's and don'ts. And what I'm going to have Seth do now, Seth, if you can, show the Ethics video. And as I said earlier, this comes from the Ohio Ethics Commission website, and it gives about three or four scenarios of different situations. And I think it does a really good job of showing how these, how these issues could arise. And it also explains why they are or would not be violations. So after we want to show this video, then we can have questions if anybody has any questions. But Seth, can you go ahead and get that going?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a first time trying to share a video. If anyone can't hear it, please let us know. But I'm going to go ahead and share screen. And please, again, let us know if you can't hear it.
Seth, I don't think the volume's working, or at least I can't hear it.
Yeah, I can't hear it, Seth.
Yeah, likewise.
Everybody having trouble with the volume?
Yep.
Okay. Hmm. I'm not sure what the fix is for that.
That's all right. We can, if you can't get the volume, Seth, then what we can do is provide the link to all of the Board and Commission members. So maybe if they have time. Again, it's only about 15 minutes, and does a really good job, I think, of addressing the issues. And maybe they can review that on their own time if they have a few minutes.
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. The last thing I have is, so the city is required to provide all new public officials and employees with a copy of the Ohio Ethics Laws and to get a signed acknowledgement that those have been provided. So if Jack and Seth have not already done that, they will be providing that to you with an acknowledgement sheet. So once you receive that, if you could just sign that form and get it back to Jack or Seth, that would be great. That's all I had for this part of the presentation. Does anybody have a question that I might be able to try to answer?
Martina, excuse me, I have a comment. I've worked as a government contractor for like 45 years or 40 years, and this is very similar to the training that we had with dealing with the government. And I totally agree with what you're saying about perception. Perception can absolutely kill you if you're not careful. So, you know, if you're not sure, to me, in my own mind's eye, I would just not do it. And I know that in your example, when you were on the BZA, you mentioned that you sat in the audience. I would probably, if I recused myself from a, from a case, I probably would not even be there. Because who knows? You know, people might look and say, oh, well, you know, so-and-so's, you know, in the, in the crowd. And I'm not sure, what do you, what do you think about that? About the, you know, how proper that might be?
I agree with you, Bob. I've seen it done both ways. I've seen it where the person, you know, indicates on the record, and I think that's a very good thing to do, to make the record clear, hey, I need to recuse myself from this case and abstain. So it's on the record that you recuse yourself. And then I've seen, at that point, some people go down and sit in the audience like I did and have, you know, and I think it's good to physically remove yourself from the dais because that sends a visual image that you are taking no part in this case whatsoever. And I've also seen it done where people, as you said, leave the room. And then when that case is over with, somebody goes and gets them and brings them back in. Out of an abundance of caution, if that's the way that you want to do it and you feel comfortable doing it, I think that's perfectly fine. And I agree with you 100%. It sends a message that we, I'm completely done. If you're sitting in the audience, I think that's okay too. But people could also say, well, you were making faces if you were doing this, and you were influencing with your body language the other members of the Commission. So if you avoid that, you can leave the room.
And I think in the sensitive world that we live in now, that might be picked up on. And people may point at you, and, you know, all of a sudden, it becomes a flashpoint that really shouldn't happen. So, okay, I would probably err on the caution, you know, side and just kind of leave the room.
I agree. I think that's perfectly fine, and that's the safest thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Hearing no other questions, let's move on to the Sunshine Law and the Ohio Open Meeting Act. And so, and I'm sorry, some of this may be familiar to all of you or some of you. So I apologize if it's repetitive. But basically, what the Sunshine Law and the Open Meeting Act is, indicates is that just as the city council has to comply with these and conduct their business in meetings open to the public and not in private behind closed doors, so do the Boards. So whenever you have a public meeting scheduled, of course, the staff there at the city complies with the notice provisions to give the public notice of the date and time of those meetings, which were required to do. And as I'm sure you've seen before, I know in the PC and the BZA rules, they have a really good summary of the order and the procedure that's followed with every meeting. And there's always a public comment section during the, during those hearings. And the reason for that, of course, is that it is a public meeting, and the public has a right to, you know, express their opinions and present evidence or testimony in whatever case is before you. So basically, what the Sunshine Law and the Open Meeting Act is that, says is that since you are a decision-making body at the level of government, then your meetings have to be public, and they have to be open to the public. You're not permitted to meet in private. Where some people, where it gets a little murky because you have to have a quorum to have a meeting. So since the BZA and the PC are five members, that means a quorum of three would constitute a meeting. So then some people say, well, I saw the three of them standing out in the hallway talking, and that's public meeting, and so they violated the act. So you've got to be careful about things like that. But basically, what the, what the Open Meeting Act says, you must comply with the Open Meeting Act requirement when you have a pre-arranged gathering attended by a majority of the members of the public body and arranged for the purpose of conducting, deliberating, or transacting public business. So if you're just standing out in the hallway, three or four of you talking about the weather or what you're going to do next week, that's not a public meeting because you're not talking about public business. You have to satisfy all three of those requirements for it to be a public meeting. Again, that's a pre-arranged gathering attended by a majority of the members to discuss public business. Another area where it gets a little murky is when you have emails flying back and forth between members of the public body. Because the law says that if you get a quorum of people shooting emails back and forth who are on a Board or a Commission or whatnot, that could constitute a public meeting. And if you don't advertise it, you could run afoul of that law. So heads up, be careful about shooting emails back and forth when you have a quorum of you doing that. For you to abide by the open meeting requirements could result in a lawsuit, somebody requesting an injunction, basically, to compel you to comply with the Meeting Act and say, look, if you're going to have these meetings, they have to be open to the public. And if they were to win, they could get their court costs and attorney fees. And then if somebody were to file a frivolous claim against you for violating this act, and you were to win, again, the city in defending that would be entitled to their attorney fees and court costs if it was found to be frivolous. So that's sort of, it's a two-way street. It goes back and forth there. If action is taken during an illegal meeting, most likely, whatever action is taken is going to be found to be void and of no effect. So that's the other hammer that comes down if you violate that law. There is such a thing as an executive session, which is a private meeting of the body, and that is allowed under Ohio law only under certain circumstances. You can only have an executive session during an open public meeting. Somebody has to make a motion for an executive session. It has to be seconded. The motion has to specify the exact legal reason for the executive session. Most likely, you will never, ever have an executive session because the legal reasons for having one pretty much don't apply to what you're going to be doing. For example, you can have an executive session in Ohio to discuss certain personnel matters, which would include the appointment or employment or dismissal or discipline of a public employee, which that's probably never going to happen for you guys, to discuss the purchase or sale of property, to discuss pending or imminent court action, to discuss collective bargaining matters, to discuss security matters. So there's only a specific, specific number of legitimate reasons to go into executive private session. And quite honestly, you'll probably never even have any of those. But I want to basically contrast the executive session to the open public meeting so you can see the stark difference between the two. And that's pretty much all I have on the Open Meeting Act. Does anybody have any questions with respect to that? You're probably pretty familiar with that one. The last one would be the Ohio Public Records Act. And generally, since the city is a political subdivision, and since your Boards and Commissions are quasi, you know, public entities, you are covered by the Ohio Public Records Act, just as the city is, which essentially means anybody can come in and request of the city public records. The example I like to give of this is, some of you may own your own business. And let's say I have my own business, private company, and somebody walks into my office and asks me for the personnel files for 10 of my employees. Of course, I'm going to say no because it's none of their business. However, the city, the Boards, the Commissions of the governments are required to produce those public records. So somebody could walk into the city, ask for the personnel files of 10 of the city employees, and the city would have to copy them and hand them over. With certain legal exceptions, there are things you can redact and things you are not required to hand over, like social security numbers and things like that. But for the most part, if it's a public record, then the city would have to provide it to the person who's requesting it. A public record is defined under the Act very broadly, again, as any item that is stored on a fixed mediator, medium, excuse me, anything stored on a fixed medium which is created, received, or sent under the jurisdiction of a public office and documents the functions of the public office. So what, the correspondence that the city receives, the zoning applications, all of that type of information, those are public records that are subject to disclosure if somebody asks for a copy of it. Emails that deal with, emails that are sent or received, either inside or outside the city, those are public records if they deal with city business. Now, again, if you're talking about emails that are going back and forth talking about lunch plans or dinner plans, doesn't concern city business. It's not going to be a public record. You probably will never get an Ohio Public Records Act request to produce documents from anybody. If somebody does, by chance, make a records request to you, I would suggest that you contact Seth or Jack and let them know you've received a records request so we can make sure that that's timely processed. Because the law says that it has to be responded to within a, within a quote-unquote "reasonable" amount of time, which is not really defined in the law. They're going to look at how many records they're asking for and how long it should take you to produce it, and how long it should take the legal department to look at it, to make redactions. And that's what they're going to say. But the sooner it gets to Jack or Seth that we can respond to it and address, address it, the better. Again, I can't recall, and Seth can probably chime in, I can't recall a BZA or a PC member ever receiving a public records request because typically, they send those directly to the clerk of council, and they get processed that way. But I always like to make people aware, just in, just in the off-chance you receive something, you'll know what to do with it. Therefore, you know, it's important to, to make sure that you're aware of that. That's all I had on the Public Records Act. Any questions about that one? That's all I had on the Public Records Act. Any questions about that one? All right. And then there were a couple of other, I'm going to just call them housekeeping issues that Jack and Seth and I had discussed going over. So as you know, I think I mentioned a minute ago, the BZA and the PC are five-member bodies, so a quorum of at least three is needed to conduct business. You have to have three there to do anything. The issue of voting on meeting minutes was brought up, and Jack and Seth and I were discussing that. And I think there was a question as to, let's say you have a meeting on March 10th that you are not able to attend, and your next meeting is April 10th, and you're voting on whether or not to approve the meeting minutes from the March 10th meeting, which you were not present at. If that's the case, you should abstain from voting on meeting minutes for a meeting that you were not present at. Because you basically don't have the knowledge, since you were not at that meeting, to say, yeah, that's what happened, or that's not what happened. So it's important, if that occurs, just abstain, and they'll continue voting on the on the meeting minutes with whoever was there. We did talk about abstaining, and I do agree what Bob said a few minutes earlier with, if you think there's a conflict, the best thing to do is to recuse yourself. If you want a legal opinion, you can certainly go through Seth or Jack, and we'll, you can describe the situation, we'll look into it, and we'll give you an opinion on what you should or should not do. But I agree wholeheartedly with Bob that if there is even the appearance of a conflict, it's probably best to err on the side of caution and just go ahead and recuse yourself. Now, that being said, it is important to have as many members as possible voting on an issue. So if there is no conflict, and I know this comes up sometimes, because sometimes there are some very hotly disputed issues that come up before the commissions, especially when you're talking about zoning issues. And some members of the public have a very, very, they're entrenched in their positions. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but sometimes you get a very controversial issue that comes up in front of you. If you don't have a conflict of interest, some people will say, well, I'm going to abstain on that because I don't want to make a decision because that's a that's a hot issue. You know, and I'm like, well, that's not really, you should still, I understand the rock and the hard place, but if it's not a conflict, you should you should vote based upon the evidence and the testimony that's presented. So I wanted to make that clear while also emphasizing that if there is a conflict or an appearance of a conflict, of course, recuse. But try to avoid the situation where you recuse just because you don't want to make a difficult decision. Because it's, and I realize it's difficult, like I said, I was on that BZA, and there were some hotly contested issues, and it is sometimes a hard decision to make. Which is why I know Seth and Jack and everybody appreciate you volunteering to serve on these commissions and boards. I know Seth had sent out an email a few minutes before we started with a review of the parliamentary procedure. And basically, what I would say with respect to that is, you know, there, as I said earlier, the BZA and the PC rules do give some really good procedural outlines of it. The Roberts Rules of Procedure basically address different issues where there isn't something already in your rules. So if there isn't already something in your rules, you probably know the typical standard motions, motion to adjourn, motion to approve, motion to reject. Your motions take a second, you know, somebody makes a motion, there has to be a second and then a vote on it. And I think for most, if not all things, Seth, you can correct me, I think for most, if not all things that come up before the PC and the BZA majority rules. So as long as you got that majority, then you're okay. So I would suggest just reviewing the handout that Seth provided. And if there's any questions about that, of course, we'll be happy to go through that. Seth, did you have anything more on that? Because I know that was your your handout, and I think it's a very good one.
No, I think it's a good point you made, Martina, that the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, both each have their own rules. And so the first meeting of each year, we redistribute those and then just ask the Planning Commission and the Board to acknowledge receipt and understanding of the rules for each each body. So, yeah, like you said, Roberts is more of just a, an overview summary of parliamentary rules. And so I think, you know, as you said, it's a great suggestion. If there's something in their rules that isn't covered, you know, we might be able to find some guidance in that summary sheet.
Right, right. That's how I use it, is if it's not covered in the rules, then resort to Roberts rules to see how you should address it. That's the end of my presentation. Seth, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, thank you, though, for a very thorough explanation. I mean, I think that we all know that there are some underlying state rules, state laws with ethics and procedure and all of that. But sometimes it's very good to hear those again.
Yeah, and again, I wasn't trying to cover everything, but to just sort of put it in the mind so that if something comes up, so like, oh, yeah, that rings a bell, so maybe I should ask about that. And again, please do not hesitate. If you have a question, to contact Seth and Jack, and if need be, they'll contact me. And we're more than happy to address whatever issue you think you might have so that we can help you work through it and do what's best.
Hey, Martina, I have one more clarification for you, please.
Yeah.
Again, coming from the DOD side of life, I know that there's specific confidentiality held with papers, specifically contracts, technical documents, you know, that type of stuff. However, on the BZA over the years, I'm a note taker, so I tend to take notes. And the other thing is that we get packets. You know, I take those packets home, and then after a period of time, and I kind of put that in air quotes, because for a case that may come back to us at one time or another, I'll keep that documentation. Otherwise, I'll end up shredding it rather than just pitch it in the pitch it in the trash because I consider it to be somewhat confidential. So is that the proper way of me for disposing those type of notes?
Yeah, are you talking about your handwritten notes, or are you talking about the packets that Jack and Seth give to you?
Both, my handwritten notes and the packets, because we do get packets. They're delivered to us electronically, or we used to get them, we used to get them in a manila envelope. And if we get them in a manila envelope, easy for me to say, of course, that's hard copy. So, you know, after after that's expired, I want to get rid of it. But I don't think it's proper for me to just, you know, discard it in the trash, so I'll end up shredding it.
Yeah, with respect to the the packages that Jack and Seth provide to you, the way I see that package is if you don't make any handwritten notes on it, then it's a copy of the original that Jack and Seth have. So if somebody were to make a public records request for that, we could give them a copy of what we have already. Now, the tricky part comes when you start making notes. Because if you make a note on, let's say, the one of the documents that was contained in your packet, then by adding that note to it, what could be said is that you've created a new public record by creating that note. Now, again, there's sort of two ways to look at this. One is, you know, if that's a note for yourself that nobody else is going to use, then it's not a public record. But then you have another line of thinking that says, well, you've altered it by creating the note, so it is a public record. I would definitely hang on to the ones that you make notes on. Hang on to the ones that make notes on, and then when you say to yourself, do I really need to keep this? Call Seth or Jack, and we'll look at, because there is a retention period time, a certain amount of time we're required to keep those.
Okay, okay.
The ones that you make notes on, I would definitely call and say, hey, can I dispose of these? And we'll tell you what what needs to be done.
And again, I think I've been following good practices, because I don't, I don't, when I take my notes, I take them on a piece of paper.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm making notes when you're talking, you know, and I'm putting them on a pad. I'm not, I'm not marking any any specific document. So, okay, I'm good then.
But, but they could also say, but they could also say those notes on a pad, you just created a new public record, so. So with those, same thing, I would say, just out of an abundance of caution, before you get rid of those, destroy those, pick up the phone and say, hey, I've got these. What should I do? Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Seth, that's all I have. So I'm just going to say thank you again to everybody, because I know you've all worked all day like I have, and Seth said, we're all tired. So I appreciate you listening to a 45-minute presentation here.
And Martina, if I might, I know we have some newer members, and I wonder if maybe they have any general questions for you, if you don't mind sticking around for a few minutes. I'll just call out to Seth and Jessica and Barbara. I know Barbara hasn't had any meetings yet. And Sabrina as well. Do you all have any questions? I know we kind of got into the ethics and procedure. Do you have any general questions about the board or the commission or anything of that nature?
I don't, not on my end, Seth.
Okay.
Yes, not on my end. I've worked at public institutions, and so these are very familiar at the state level and the quasi-federal level as well. So it was a great overview, just a quick hit and reminder. So no, thank you. Thank you, Martina.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you all so much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Oh, Seth, could you email them the link to that video, just in case they want to look at it?
Yeah, I'll do that, and I'll make sure they get the the ethics laws and acknowledgement form. And then board members and commission members, just at our next meeting or before, if you want, if I can just get the signed copy, the acknowledgement form back, we'll keep that on record. So thank you for, thank you all again, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.